I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Kathy Sweet from Monticello United Methodist will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for those who are willing to serve. We especially are thankful this evening for our firefighters, our police, and we just pray for their safety as they help us to be a better community. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan? Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Oat?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Kinn?
Here.
And the form?
Thank you. Public participation. There's no one in person that wishes to address the council. If you are remote, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with Ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or three web conferences. Is there anyone online this evening? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the first order of business, which is the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the following: claims report, claims dated May 25, 2021 through June 14, 2021; meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, May 24, 2021; permit report, May 2021; fire report, May 2021; police report, May 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing, then I need a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Oat?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kinn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. There are plenty of businesses in the Monticello area that are actively hiring to fill over many full and part-time positions at all levels, trades, and experience. View the local job board or visit the Piatt County Workforce Development Office for workforce assistance. Congratulations to Lisa Schreffler Photography, winner of the 2021 Monticello Boot Camp Grant. Proio Factory has expanded their hours and offerings, now providing a full coffee bar daily beginning at 6:30 a.m. The Monticello Farmers Market opens for the season on Thursday, June 17, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on North State Street next to the Monticello Community Building. Everyone pay very close attention, please. Monticello Summer Singers begin rehearsal for the summer on Thursday, June 17, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Monticello United Methodist Church. I would be most pleased to see all of you in attendance and participating, since I'm conducting it this year. Monticello Chamber Business Expo is this Friday, June 18, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in downtown on the Courthouse Square. Monticello Movie Nights will kick off this Saturday, weather permitting, with Ferdinand. The movie will be held on the east side of the square and begins at sunset. Thank you to Hedge to Edge Incorporated and the Mower Shop for sponsoring this event. Piatt County Trailblazer 66th Annual Rodeo is June 24 through 26, with the parade through downtown on Saturday, June 26, at 10 p.m. Moving on to new business, mayoral appointment, Ward 1 vacancy. At this time, I would like to appoint Ashley Muse to fill the vacancy created when John Frericks had to resign his seat because he moved out of the district. Ashley, would you please stand? You need to come forward because Jill's going to swear here.
I, Ashley Muse.
I, Ashley Muse.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Alderwoman, Ward 1.
To the office of Alderwoman, Ward 1.
In the city of Monticello.
In the city of Monticello.
In the county of Piatt, aforesaid.
In the county of Piatt, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderwoman, Ward 1.
Of the office of Alderwoman, Ward 1.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congrats. I finally got it evened up. It's four to four now. Four boys and four girls. That's been a goal mine. I got it done. Mayoral appointment, Monticello Fire and Rescue District. The chief has submitted the following list, and I would like to appoint these people as to the Monticello Fire and Rescue Department. Caleb Hanson, firefighter. Would you please stand when I call your name? I lost my place. Robert Gregg Bradley, firefighter. Cole Smith, firefighter. Amanda Weiss, firefighter. Dan Sheehan, lieutenant.
Dan's not here today. He's on vacation.
That's fine.
He's appointed to lieutenant.
That's fine. I'd...
Motion to accept.
A motion to accept.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition? Let's just have a voice vote. I think that's good enough. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Welcome and thank you all so much.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead, John. Sorry.
Lieutenant, he's our recruiting officer.
Oh, okay. Very good. Good job. What are the numbers now, John?
Nineteen. Twenty's our max.
The max.
And we have two more applications, too, so we're really excited.
I am, too. Thanks a lot. Good job. All right. Moving on to our next item, options for honoring Police Officer Chris Overheim. Discussion only. Terry, you're going to lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was some interest, obviously, from this council on honoring Officer Chris Overheim. I reached out to Amber Overheim's father, Kim Dobson, and we met with Amber and her family, Mayor Stoner and Alderwoman Oat. We met with Amber and the family a couple of Fridays ago, I think a couple hours into it, and we had a great conversation. Amber shared some really great stories. So one thing kind of led to another, and Amber kind of asked, what might you be interested in? We wanted to hear her thoughts and not provide our thoughts until we hear what Amber and the family wanted maybe to see or entertain. Amber, do you want to come up to the front table? If you don't, I don't know if I told you I would be asking you that, so I apologize.
Totally fine.
Close to microphone. So those that are listening online.
There's nobody online, Larry.
There's at least one online.
This is a compromising position because I feel like no matter which way I turn, there's always somebody behind me, and I feel like that's just kind of disrespectful.
That's okay. They're all friendly back there.
We're all friendly. You've got your back. I've got your six.
Okay. I'll sit this way, then.
We had a wonderful conversation. I was very, we were all very impressed with Amber and her kids. What a great family. I can't say enough about it. I'm going to probably hand it over to Amber.
Go ahead.
Because I didn't bring any Kleenexes. But Amber, if you want to go over kind of what, you know, you kind of directed the conversation, and we didn't, and that was great, because we didn't want, didn't want to steer you in any one direction or another.
Sure.
So we appreciated you kind of just telling us your thoughts. You know, you had some conversations with your husband.
Yes.
If you want to, do you mind sharing?
No, not at all. Not at all. So, sorry, I can't face you all at the same time, but yeah, I mean, through conversations that I've had with various, you know, members of Monticello and Piatt County and through various social media posts and things like this, I mean, I've been kind of trying to follow along, admittedly not super present in that realm, but I had kind of, I had heard some things, right? And so when you came to me, I mean, it's very clear, it's very clear where I feel like Chris would be best honored, and that would be on a softball field. And so we talked about that, and you're right, one thing led to another, and two hours later, you might have been off a little more than you thought you were going to. But so as that conversation morphed, we started talking about the proposed sports complex, and you shared with me a visual dated, if I'm right, I think it's April 18, 2011, and I said something to the effect of, okay, well, in terms of, in terms of completion of this project, where are you from, you know, zero percent to 100%, right? And I think, I think you're about the 10% mark, and so we kind of had more conversation around that. And my brain, because of the, you know, 13 years of traveling that we've done with softball, automatically went to weekend tournaments. And Terry and Mayor Stoner were, reminded me that this started out as a recreation facility, right, to fulfill our recreation needs in town. So we kind of talked around that, but one of the things that I shared with them was the fact that, you know, when the Powerball gets up there into like ridiculous money, like 500-plus million dollars, and you look at your spouse and you're like, should I go buy some tickets? Because, you know, your odds are even worse whenever it gets up that high. But Chris and I would do that for times, from time to time. We were not avid gamblers, per se, but we would do that from time to time, and we would daydream a minute about, well, what if, like, what if we won the lottery? Like, what, how would that feel? What would we do? And in every conversation, there was inevitably a softball complex. And he said, I would quit my job tomorrow, and we would build some sort of fantastic, you know, facility, and I would manage that, and that would be my job, and I would be, you know, we would live happily ever after, right? So it all just seemed very fitting, and granted, I have a biased opinion about this because I'm coming from it, coming at it from a softball perspective, but I know lots of people in travel baseball, rec baseball, travel soccer, rec soccer. I mean, so my question, I suppose, to the group that met with me was, well, you know, if we want to keep this on a recreation level, I think that's great, but I was thinking it would be a fantastic way to return to the community and provide some economic stimulus in the meantime. So I was thinking, well, why couldn't we use it for maybe a recreational purpose Monday through Thursday and use it as a economic stimulus, if you will, for tournament travel Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? So we tossed around that idea, and as you may or may not know, we're creating a foundation for my husband in his honor, and that, we have received a ridiculous amount of support. It's wildly crazy, you guys. I don't know why people want to hear the words that are coming out of my mouth now and turn them into memes and t-shirts and plaques and all that fun stuff, but it's kind of, has my head spinning a little bit. But with all of that, I feel as though we have a bit of a platform, and with a platform, you end up with a little bit of fundraising ability. Let's just face the facts. If we're going to do this, it's not going to be cheap regardless, right? And so because family is one of the core values of our foundation, I think that, and because of the overwhelming, and I kind of have to do one of these things because I need to see you all in this moment, the overwhelming support from our very awesome community, I feel like there wouldn't be any better way to honor Chris and pay it back to the community and represent something that would encompass family, family fun, family moments, family time. So that's my thought. Now, I could talk about this all night and share two hours' worth of conversation that we discussed, but I think I'll spare you all of those details. You know, I don't know what else, is there any other particular that you want me to share about our discussion?
I think, I think Amber, it was very loud and clear to me, the love and support that this community showed, Amber and the family, it just resonated at your dining room table. You want to do whatever you can in your power to give back to the community.
Absolutely.
And that was the headline of that conversation. So I think, to Amber's point about fundraising and whatnot, is joining alongside.
Yes.
Amber and her advocacy and agenda and efforts.
Yes.
And a partnership, you know, whatever that might look like. We didn't get into the details of any of that, but I think that was kind of the loud and clear statement was just to give back to the community because of the overwhelming love and support.
Absolutely. And I, and I digress and, you know, just kind of take another moment because it has been truly overwhelming, and it still continues to happen. We need to definitely reward our male person for the effort that's been put in because it's been a fairly taxing position for them to be in this last almost month, which still this kind of blows my mind as well. But yeah, you know, I guess my vision, because like we talked, I've been to several different facilities around the area, and, you know, I would need a soccer mom and a baseball mom or dad, you know, like, though, that input, but I could see us being able to solidify some pretty significant sponsorships based on some of even the conversations that I've had subsequent to our meeting, you know, with companies like Easton and DiMarini and, you know, these pretty major contributors. And so I am absolutely willing and able to, you know, be present in however it is that, you know, that the city feels fit. I don't really have any expectation whatsoever, but am willing to put forth the effort and utilize whatever it is that God has given me to kind of follow His lead, which is exactly what we're doing. We need a head of household, and I can't think of any, any better person to put there. So that's what we've done. And I say person, that's not right either, but you know what I mean. So that's, yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing.
So I think, I think we shared Amber's thoughts with the Recreation Committee the other, at your last meeting. I'm hoping Amber can meet with the Rec Foundation at their next meeting to share, you know, exactly what she shared this evening. So I don't know, Mayor Stoner or Alderwoman Oat, if you have anything to add right now or, and the rest of the council can discuss.
I really don't have anything to add. Terry, you did a good job, and your thoughts are great. I really appreciate it.
Great.
Do any of you have questions or comments you'd like to make?
Well, I was going to say that this was, this idea was presented at our, as Terry said, at our meeting last Monday, and I think that committee has set behind it. We have been scratching for the last 10 years to try to make this happen, and so we are very much willing to have you have a major impact about what this looks like and, you know, stand beside you and kind of work to make this happen. I mean, it's, we are, it's too bad that this is why this has the potential to happen, but we are 100% behind this effort as a Rec Committee, and I'm sure go beyond that. But, you know, we had some, we've come up with some thoughts and up in, we've met the last couple of months to try to make some recommendations to the council. This certainly changes that in terms of the reach from a fundraising standpoint, and because of that, I think we're willing to come beside you and make this complex what Chris would want it to be.
Sure. And it's not all about softball, so let me just make that clear because there are so many other sports out there. That's just my angle, right? That...
See, we did discuss that. It changes the scope of what this can be.
Yes.
And I think.
Yeah.
Us maybe dream a little bit more than we did before. It was certainly much more of a practical, this, the community needs fields and needs a park and needs, there's, there's things that we just, we just don't have, but the fact that this can also be a tournament site and can be a real destination that can, can help drive economic interests of Monticello.
Yes.
Much more than we could ever have imagined. We're 100% behind them.
Yeah. And there's a lot of trickle-down implications, right? We've, and we kind of talked about that, but those are details for another day. But all in all, I do think it's a, it could be a massively productive adventure, and we'd be happy to, to do that. Yeah.
Amber, I want to thank you again for taking the time to meet with us because I feel like as a council, it's important to know your thoughts and what Chris would have wanted.
Yes.
So we, we very easily could have gone with some of the suggestions out there, and there wasn't a bad suggestion.
No. And I, and I, and I would, you know, say that for the record as well. There were really a lot of great suggestions, ones that are very honorable, coming from a very, a place of just great love and intention, and I appreciate that very much. And it's not to say that some of those things couldn't be done, but it just makes the most sense to me, knowing who my husband was and where he liked to spend all of his time, you know, that, that we, that we pursue this, and it feels like I'm supposed to be doing that. So, so that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Moving on, Ordinance 2021-31, an ordinance approving the final plat of Sage Meadows First Edition Planned Unit Development subdivision. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sage Meadows is a residential subdivision located at by Kirby Medical Center. This would be the, actually, the first edition would be the second phase of the subdivision. I asked Jim Gaborzic in his new role, this is part of what he will be dealing with, or is the subdivision aspect of city operations. So Jim, do you want to give a brief?
Sure. So I reviewed this, the Sage Meadows First Edition, like Terry said, it's the, you know, actual second phase of this. It connects to just the north of what is now Sage Meadows. So lots of sellers, pretty quickly, want to get this done, and they submitted their final plat, and they looked good on it. I went through it with a pretty meticulous comb and made sure that all the i's dotted, the t's across. So like I said, the subdivision is located on Route 7, a large strip, newly created Sage Meadows subdivision. Subdivision means definition of and requirements, which have to be 52, section 152.044, which is a final plat submission review procedure, and section 152.045, the final development plan for a planned unit development of the municipal code. The subdivision does not require a preliminary plan or public hearing or action by the planning and zoning board, but does require a city council approval by the way it works. And so the final plat is attached to what you received in your packet, and we recommend that you discuss and vote to approve the final plat.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Is this a point where we're going to tie back into Route 47 or, we're going to, this seems to be, continue to be a blocked-in area. At some point, they were talking about going back out on the highway.
Yes, at some point it will.
But this is not the point.
Yeah. And it's mainly, you know, as they go along, they want to have lots for sale, get those built out on generating revenue to continue to developing, because they have to put in all the infrastructure first.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Oat?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-31, an ordinance approving the final plat of Sage Meadows First Edition Planned Unit Development subdivision?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Discussion before we vote? Hearing or seeing, then I may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Oat?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kinn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2021-32, a resolution approving the engagement of Clan and Marketing. Hallie.
Thank you, Mayor.
He didn't want to talk first. I forgot that Jim was going to do that, so he covered for me nicely.
I'm going to ask Shelley Crawford Stock to come up so we can hear her as well. The rebranding effort is something that we've talked about for several years. I think Larry, you might have been on the council in the past, about 20-something years ago.
Years ago, yes. Thank you.
Between the four organizations, and if you remember the intent, they all have similar logos, but it's, it's more than a picture. Since then, we, the four organizations have kind of morphed into, I think, about 18 different logos right now. No consistency, nothing like that, but most important, it isn't an accurate reflection of who we are, where we want to go and so forth. You know, we have the unique Monticello, we have the yesterday's charm, today's innovation, country living with city life. I mean, there's so many different slogans out there right now that are existing, representing existing Monticello, so we would like to, in essence, bring everybody on the same boat and in the same direction. And consistent branding is important because for that particular reason in general, it kind of identifies what we want to do as a community, not just for our existing residents and businesses, but also the ones we're trying to attract. So we hope and we feel this rebranding initiative will bring the respective organizations back into that common theme and help improve and strengthen our marketing strategies. That recommends engaging with Clan and Marketing for this effort. We've done a lot of work with Clan and Marketing over the years, and not alone, as many of you know, who was with First State Bank is with Clan now. All individuals have been very involved with our boot camp program for years. But Phase 1 of the proposal is strictly from the city level, where all the city, so city makes sense to have that as Phase 1, as the umbrella, and that would be a cost not to with the city stakeholders for the brand research and development, as well as messaging identity at the city level. Phase two includes the Chamber Main Street Tours of Organizations, which will happen afterwards. City anticipates using federal American Rescue Plan funds for the project as it would help with the marketing strategy to recap our tours and recovery efforts. This is important to us because as many of you know, in 2019, Hyatt County received the highest percentage of growth per visitor spending of all under two counties in the state of Illinois. That is huge. So we want to continue that momentum that we, maybe pick up where we lost it and because of COVID, but continue that and move forward full steam ahead. So anything you want to add to that, Jim?
I think she covered it. I could list more of the Monticellos that we have, but I don't think you need to go down that path. There's a lot.
Any comments or questions?
As a communicator, I think this is a great idea. Having, having a consistent message is really key.
And that's, and that's our goal. It's just, right now, there is no consistent message throughout the community.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2021-32, a resolution approving the engagement of plan and marketing?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Last chance. Any comments or questions? Hearing the scene, I may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, resolution 2021-33, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code 2021 Motor Fuel Tax General Maintenance Program. That's be you. Terry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Brett Baker started this and we're in transition phase with Jim taking this on as well. So this is our annual motor fuel tax money, oil and chip program. This year, normally that's about $90,000, $110,000. If you recall, we were gonna do some cold mix paving on County Farm Road and Fissler Road that are in dire need of a little bit more than just a coat or two of oil and chip. So we opened up the bids on June 8th, and unfortunately, the bids, along with engineering, came in a little bit over that $375,000 that we passed and on motor fuel tax funds on our maintenance program this year. So we're asking, this resolution does a few things. It asks or notifies IDOT that we're requesting an additional $15,000, so a total of $390,000. And that allows a 3% to 4% contingency if something comes up that unknown to us, that we need to do a little bit more oil and chip or a little bit more cold patching, then we can do that without going back to IDOT and asking for another $2,000 or $3,000 or whatever. So it's inflated a little bit to cover any unknowns that we may come across. And then it's also awards the Seal Coat Project to Earl Walker Company. We had two bids for the Seal Coat, Earl Walker and Eliana, which is normal for us. And then also awards the cold mix paving project to Eliana Construction. So everything said and done, we should be below the $390,000 mark. However, this resolution asked for another $15,000 to the $375,000 originally. So total's $390,000. It is recommended the city council discuss and approve this resolution as submitted. This will get us code operations and so on and so forth done before school starts.
Just a point of clarification, the money that we're asking for is our money.
Absolutely.
Hey, we have an account with IDOT and they're, this money is in the account and it's our money. So, but they have to approve us using our money. So I don't understand.
The auditors make this, too.
They do? Okay. So that's just a point of interest. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2021-33, a resolution for maintenance under Illinois Highway Code 2021 Motor Fuel Tax General Maintenance Program? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of our staff? Hearing the scene, I may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, traffic speed limits. Discussion only. This includes East Washington Street, Bridge Street, Center Street, Market Street, Route 105, or South Market Street, 105, North Market Street, 105, and East Old Route 47. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I handed out, I didn't have these prepared when the packets went out, so we printed them all actually this morning. So the first one, if you look at the north sheet reference, in the bottom right-hand corner, it says East Old Route This is Trailblazer Road all the way to the north, all the way down to, over the overpass towards Circle K and Red Wheel area. The speed limit that you see on all of these is the actual speed limit that exists today. Clayton went out with our survey-grade GPS unit. He shot all of the speed limit signs, so it's clearly identified where the speed changes and so on and so forth. Chief Carter and I met, we talked about this a little bit. This particular area, if you recall, several years ago, we actually got a few letters asking for the city to stop in this area from the Hyatt County Forest Preserve, Kirby Medical Center, and Walden Pond subdivision, wrote for us to, requesting to reduce the speed. At that time, IDOT controls, and it's their jurisdiction from really the Rick Riedings entrance over Interstate 72 until where it tees into 105. That's the Illinois Department of Transportation's jurisdiction. At that time, they did not feel lowering the speed limit from 50 miles an hour, which it is currently, lowering it was not warranted. Their section. So what we are proposing is that we go ahead and take the initiative and reduce the speed limit, and we're looking at 35 miles an hour from Trailblazer Road till when you get to IDOT's jurisdiction, and then, as we'll see later, 35 miles an hour on into town on Illinois Route 105. We feel that that's what was requested by those entities I mentioned earlier. We feel that 35 miles an hour is a safer speed than the 45 out there in that particular area. That's why Chief Carter and I kind of came up with 35 miles an hour in that section from Trailblazer Road to almost Rick Riedings, and then we'll pick back up to back down to 35 miles an hour by Iron Horse Place, Hyatt County Mental Health, Circle K North. It's currently 45 miles an hour at that particular place. We would just maintain the 35 miles an hour on into town.
From there?
From there. This is just discussion only tonight. If there's direction of some other way, we can, we'll definitely entertain those as well. Some of these, we will have to partner with other agencies. So when we get into town on Illinois 105, we'll notify IDOT of our intentions. We'll revisit IDOT, maybe lowering the speed from its existing 50, five zero. Now that we've taken the initiative and we're doing 35 before and after, maybe they would reengage and say, you know what, we'll drop ours down to 45 or whatever. When we get east of town, out by the middle school here in a little bit, we'll have to work with the Hyatt County Highway Department. That code is under their jurisdiction. So this will definitely be multi-agency effort. But I wanted to get with the council to see what you had a desire for, any other things to do on these particular stretches of roads. First one is East Old Route 47 out by Lodge Park.
Questions?
It's clear because it's all the resident, residential area. Yeah, I mean, Walden, now you have Sage Meadows, you have Sage Woods, the hospital.
What was the reasoning for lowering it, Terry?
That was just a request. And from Walden Pond, the hospital and Lodge Park, Forest Preserve.
There seems to be a lot more traffic out there now, now than there used to be. And it's a little bit dangerous pulling out of the hospital lot.
Hospital park.
Or do the drive there. Sometimes you just can't see what's coming and it comes fast. So this, I think this is good.
Callie reminded me as well. Kirby's Wellness Trail, all the, we just talked residential Walden Pond, Sage Meadows. We're looking at doing some kind of a connection from that side of old Route 47 into Lodge Park. Some pedestrian walking, biking path of some sort. And actually, the Hyatt County Forest Preserve had indicated that they would be willing in that triangular forested area just north of Kirby Hospital and west of Walden Pond of maybe putting in some kind of natural mulched path going through the forested area to Walden, Sage Meadows and Kirby.
Good job.
So is there any, and this is, we're looking at going from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. And I think, and I want Chief Carter may verify this, if you see a speed limit sign, that doesn't mean you can do that speed limit.
Not until you reach the sign.
Not until you reach the sign.
That's good to know.
A lot of people, I think, don't know that.
That's what I told you the other day, didn't I?
I just want to clarify. So it would, dropping down from 45 to 35 and then picking back up to 45 once you're past like the Walden Pond or Trailblazers?
Yep.
Because it's 45 the rest of the way to the other overpass or interstate, right? Or you can go?
Yeah, I think it's all 45 north of that. That would be, I think that stretch would probably be the Hyatt County Highway Department. So it depends on if it's a township road, a county road, and the Hyatt County Highway Engineer has jurisdiction over some East Washington Street, Monticello Road.
On the other side of the highway, is, is there, are there particular, has there been some dangerous things happen from the highway, say, till we get to Forest Preserve Park?
Just as, I mean, as you try to, I drive bus down that way, and there are, there is a lot more bicycle traffic and walker traffic, and people don't understand where off the road is. So it, yeah, it can, slowing it down is probably gonna be a smart thing to do.
I think, and we had a request a few years ago to put, to put the deer ahead signs. I mean, we did that, but it's, it's kind of dangerous with, with the deer out there as well. Will the state automatically, if we lower ours down, does the state, are they gonna follow? It seems like that's quite a big jump to go from one and then back down, you know, to have this 50 stretch right in the middle there. Because people be coming off that thing doing 50, and all of a sudden, they're gonna, well, they won't.
Make sure you have somebody sitting there, John.
I would reach out to IDOT, Walden and Reed, and, I mean, this is what, this is what, I mean, this is our road, our jurisdiction. This is what we want to do. And would you guys be interested in lowering it to 40? And I would communicate that with them before I brought in ordinance to you.
See what their response would be.
Yeah.
Anything else on that one? Nope. Gallery for speed to Market Street.
So the next one should be in the north sheet reference, North Market Street, which this picks up out there by the Hyatt County Mental Health. Again, you can see the existing speed limits, 45, and then it drops down as you're coming into town around 40 miles an hour, and then on down to 35 miles an hour, all the way down to Center Street at the stoplight. So what we're showing here would be proposing 35 miles an hour again as you're coming into town from Interstate 72 or Walden Pond, and then getting to thereabouts where the cemetery Sexton, the Monticello Cemetery is at, and then going from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour from that location south all the way to Center Street at the traffic signal. There's an existing school zone on that stretch of North Market Street, Illinois Route 105 there by Wilson Street. That will occasionally obviously go down to 20 miles an hour when flashing. Well, that's what we have looked at entertaining doing is continuing 35 south to just before Cemetery Road, and then lowering from proposed 35 down to 30 miles an hour through town.
It'd be more consistent just to keep it at 30 so you don't have so many switches. You don't have the different changes.
So you want to maybe go 30 miles an hour all the way out?
Yeah, 35. Because you're gonna have 35 up here.
Yeah, you'd have 35 from?
Basically coming into town all the way.
Just the way it is now, right?
It's 45 out there now.
Well, I have to, I have to, I find it's 45, but then the rest of that's 35.
So right now, it's 40. You can get to right before the Cemetery Road. It goes from 45 to 40.
I just, I just hope that I'm going the right speed when I go by, so.
Hello.
Because I have had an officer point at me before. I'm experienced.
So right now, it's 45 to where you get to just before the Cemetery Road. Then it drops to 40. And then when you get just past the Hyatt County Forest Preserve or Kirby RX, it drops to 35 all the way to Center Street currently.
Yeah. Why not just keep it 35?
I just keep it 35.
Instead of making the changes. If you're already coming 35 coming in, why not just keep it the same, all the way to Center?
So maintain 35 from out by the interchange.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it out there, I would just keep it consistent all the way through. So you don't have to, I mean, it's already 35 right now. There around St. Philida coming in.
So 35 all the way to Center Street?
That would be my suggestion.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, you got a thought?
I think when you're looking at lowering it 35 down to the 30, is that there are beginning to be a lot more kids in the area. So this, this section here, this dropping down is more residential than the other. I want to get the posted residential. It's already 30. So I'm just trying to keep it down to 30.
Anyone else have something to say?
Is there a good way to be mindful of increase in traffic, increase in children, and also not have so many different speed changes in such a short time? I mean, and I know we'll get to the East Washington. I mean, and I know we'll get to the East Washington, but I mean, going out by the middle school, I noticed just every few feet, it was like, okay, 35, now 40, now 45, now 50. At, at what point can you make more than a five mile per hour jump?
What can we?
Yeah, I mean, is there a rule of thumb on that? Or suggestion or?
I'm not sure. I know that, you know, like, like you said, we're going to get to the Washington.
Yeah.
That does change as well, since all those.
Right.
Because, you know, that can be confusing as well for a driver. That it's like, okay, am I in the 30 or am I in the 35? Because I've seen some places where, you know, like you say, it goes, you're at 50, now you're at 40, now you're 30, now you're back at 50. And that can be confusing.
Yeah.
That's why I think, you know, it's, it's, I mean, if you want to stay at 35, that's fine. You want to go down to 30 through the residential, it's fine as well. To reduce the numbers, but it would still go from 35 to 30. Stay at 30 through that area versus less populated areas towards the cemetery.
We are going to have fewer kids around there when school's in session. Of course, because, you know, Lincoln School won't be crossing anymore. So that should make it a little less crowded.
It is a state highway and not just a typical residential street too. Can you really compare those?
I might have a strong feeling anyway.
So just leave 30, 35. The interchange all the way in.
Is that consensus sort of?
To the stoplight.
To the stoplight, yeah.
Okay. Uh, next one, South Market. As you, let's say, come into town, you're heading north as obviously, if you're coming into town from the south, obviously it turns to 45 miles an hour just before Bear Park entrance or Tractor Supply. And then the change, existing changes to 30 miles an hour near the softball field south of Crats Road. And then it's 30 all the way to Center Street. So what we are looking at is looking at changing really 45 miles an hour coming into town to 35 miles an hour to where it hits that already 30 miles an hour. And one of the things that we have witnessed is when you turn into R.P. Lumber, turn into Tractor Supply, and folks are southbound with 45 miles an hour, it's a little hairy.
It is.
The Hair of the Dog, that entrance is right by R.P. Lumber. So this area, we were looking at reducing it from 45 miles an hour to 35, and then it just takes off its normal, already signed 30 miles an hour continuing north to Center Street. Just that stretch, go from 45 to 35.
Anybody?
And if I can just add to that as well. There's going to be more kids at school time over at Washington.
Right. I think that's valid.
Hopefully not playing in the road.
Hopefully not in the road. But that's still be in the area, walking to it.
I'm sure Mary will be out, you know, helping them get across the street, so it'll be. Oh, no, it's not little, yeah, it is little kids, yes, you will.
Is that it on South Market? That?
Uh, can I say, and I'm not posing this at all, but you're, you're asking people to drop their speed 20 miles an hour. They're coming from the south from Beatty and come to that. You're going to take that 45 to 35. You're asking them to go from 55 to 35 instantly, just bang. I don't believe you're going to get that compliance. People are used to drifting down a little bit. You're, you're not going to get that person to put their brakes on and take a 20 mile an hour reduction in speed instantly. I think you're going to work, that's going to work up towards Tractor Supply before people, they'll comply. But I think what you're going to run into is if you start looking at the first two or 300 yards there, everybody's going to be going with speed limit. They're, they're not going to, they're not going to put the brakes on and back traffic up behind them to drop 20 miles an hour instantly when they come into the South Edge Dam. I, I think it's going to have to be a little more gradual. Not that the signage, you know, I'm not telling you not to post the signage, but I think you're going to find out that people are not going to be that compliant instantly. I think they're going to drift in before they slow down.
Yeah. Well, and that's a good point. And that's what we're going to have to work with that particular section in Illinois Department of Transportation. So there's four warning signs, you know, speed 35 ahead.
Yeah.
And maybe IDOT, because that's not our jurisdiction, maybe IDOT then. Okay, the city is desiring to do 35 due to entrances. So we will go out and move our 55 to 45, 200 feet or whatever that looks like.
I think you got to give them some cushion, a little bit of cushion.
Yeah.
You're not only asking, you know, car traffic, you're asking commercial traffic to do the same thing. Semis and whatever going up and down 105. I, I think that's a big step to ask them to go 20 miles an hour instantly, you know? That's a lot.
Yeah, it'll have to be signed accordingly. And then we'll, I mean, if this is something that the council desires, it will do the legwork and then come back with an ordinance. If that's what the council desires.
Sure, thank you.
I do think that's a good point because it's similar to coming east into town.
Right.
You can take your foot off of the accelerator, clear up the hill.
On top of the hill and that's. I always am.
But you still have to end up putting on your brakes regardless of what you do.
We good there now?
Uh, the next one would be Bridge Street. Currently, as you come into town from, say, Dland Road, it's 45 miles an hour. Again, these are posted existing speed limits, 45 miles an hour. And you do 45 miles an hour until you get past Railroad Street near the wastewater treatment plant. And at that point, it turns to 35 miles an hour. What we are looking at proposing for several reasons is to maintain 45 miles an hour as you come into town from Dland Road. And then drop down to 35 miles an hour before you get to Old Route 47. And then when, after you cross Sangamon River Bridge, drop that down to 30 miles an hour. That intersection with Foothill Railroad Street and Bridge Street is a dangerous location to be. That location happens to be a school bus drop off. So right now we would look at proposing 30 miles an hour. If you were at Market Street and you go out of town, you're going to go 30 miles an hour till you get really out of the town just before the Sangamon River Bridge. Then it would pick up to 35 miles an hour. And then 45 miles an hour across the interchange on out to Dland Road. I think similar to Market Street, just make it 35 all the way into that. To the stoplight.
No.
Nothing too much, there's much congestion there.
I've got that stop, 30 is plenty. Yeah.
It's hairy.
That's a congested area, it really is. There's, there's too much there.
Yeah, it, it's pretty residential. And there is other businesses, but yeah.
Anyone else have anything to say about that one?
So the other thing that allows us to do that, all part of the people to travel from Abbey Tree.
It can, okay. I don't have it.
If it's dropped to 30 or to 35?
Interesting judgment.
That doesn't work in Market Street.
It's a little nicer right there.
She'll appreciate.
That's something that we would foresee being a problem with having golf carts going?
I think if people were going to be able to make it to be just any other street now, I think it would just open up a lot more people in Abbey Tree. And then we would have to worry about that and doing some ignition.
Got it.
Anything else on Bridge? Uh, the last one would be East Washington Street. This is merely extending 30 miles an hour proposed past or to the east property line of pregame sports. That's a pretty busy place. And folks are parking at the Methodist Church. From what I understand, and walking across that road to get to pregame sports. This particular stretch would be the Eric Sebring would be the Pike County Highway Department passed. What we're wanting to do, and I've talked to Eric, and he would come back and kind of pull out and adjust those speed limits coming into town so you're not doing 55 to 30 type situation.
Isn't it true, Terry, that the speed limit goes from 30 to 40 and you've got that other drive out of the school, right in the new speed limit zone? I never could figure that out before, why you didn't have the 30 mile an hour go past the, the second drive.
Yeah, it, it's 40. That exists, the sign is there.
Yeah.
In the two entrances, you can go 40.
I never could figure out why it just ended down another at least a 200 yards or whatever it may be to get past the second drive of school.
I don't know what caused that, but well, this is proposing going 30 all the way out past the entrance to pregame sports.
Have you ever been out there when they let, let out a session? That's like, you're getting out of graduation at the middle school. It's that, I mean, the traffic is just thick.
Anything on East Washington?
I don't think so. Just slow it down for this there anyway, though. So he needs to proceed. You've given him direction, I assume. Yep, I'll be looking forward to taking action.
Okay, thank you.
Better day. Older person's report, Mary.
Um, as, as you all know, the construction project on Sage Drive, there was a little bit of a concern with that beginning while all three elementary schools started their move. Um, the guys from Deuce Construction have been amazing. Uh, just day one, I said, how, how many days do we have to get into the front entrance of Washington? And it was essentially, how many days do you need? And they have been fantastic. I know just in talking with them, they've also talked with neighbors about just keeping them informed when, when driveways and sidewalks and whatnot will be blocked. So, um, just as a school and city representative, I really appreciate the company that, that is doing the work. They've been wonderful to work with.
Thank you.
Uh, just to welcome older women viewers to the mix. Good luck. The lady beside you will give you some guidance, you know?
Some.
Listen to everything she says.
Take it with a grain of salt.
I think the proposal or the discussion we had earlier this evening with Amber concerning the foundation and all that, I'm, you know, 110% in favor of that. I would love to be able to see the sign posted back behind the library that said, future site of Chris O'Brien Recreational Sports Complex. And however long it takes, it's just how long it takes. But I think from what I've read and what I've seen, and she didn't mention numbers tonight, but they've, they've had tremendous support, tremendous amount of money put into the foundation already. So if she's willing to step up and help that, I think we would, you know, we're certainly not going to refuse it. And I, you know, as Mike knows, our, our goal is, you know, it's a lot of money. It's, it's gold, but you got to start. And I think she'd give us a great boost in getting it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Rodney?
Nothing to like, well, Ashley.
Michael?
I just wanted to thank the city for all that they've done through, through the COVID pandemic. Of course, we went to phase five on Friday as a state. Now, looking back, it's been, been challenging. The city's had, you know, economic, we've been able to survive thanks to some really foresight by the city staff from throughout the years because they ever anticipated the pandemic, anything like that. But it's because of some really good planning that we've been able to survive that. So thanks to the people that have gone before to make that happen. So, right, and welcome to the council, Ashley.
Yeah, I, Ashley was in school when I taught. There was, you know, how, you know how long ago that was, but she, she was not a banned person, but I still like her.
Good choice, Ashley.
That's because they're required three years of.
It's your turn, Tom.
Your grandchild.
Sammy?
I have nothing.
Ashley, I'm not going to put you on the spot if you want to say anything, you're welcome.
Well, I, I would. I, I would like to just say thank you for the opportunity to step in for Mr. Ferrex and serve the community in this way. It's pretty exciting for me since I, I have lived here pretty much my whole life. So there's been instances where I haven't, but my husband and I are raising our kids in this community. So it's really exciting to get to be a part of the council. So thank you very much.
I'm pleased to have you, thank you. Okay, police chief's report, John?
Yes, 2014, after, just after I got here, the council approved us to get some new video recording equipment in our police cars to update from the old DVD that went in there and you had to change all the time to one where we could actually just pull it and shut the car off and it download about that. And of course, that, that equipment after seven years now is, is getting very dated. I mentioned a while ago, I applied for a grant to replace all of our cameras. We had actually budgeted for the next several years to replace one car camera a year. But we got the grant. So we'll be replacing the car camera systems in the last six cars. And it will also include body cameras for all the officers.
Great.
We will be ahead of the schedule of the state, which is 2025 for us to have body cameras because of the strain. So I'm glad that we got that. The only thing that we have to cover as a, as a city is the installation of the six camera systems. If we've got the budget to take care of.
Right, right.
All taken care of. And they have to be in by the end of July. So they have to be in by the end of July. It's a tight fit. We'll make it.
Very good. Fire chief, John?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, first off, I want to say I really like your shirt.
Thank you, I, I knew some of you would.
That's enough, John.
First off, we, in May, we had a really busy month in May and ran through two calls. Some of the interesting calls we had in May, we actually had a couple of us who cat out of a tree. Interesting story, I was out of town and they had a special call, they said, do you get cats out of trees? And we got a call for a cat in the tree. I started especially, certainly paged that out. So in two months, we took two cats out of the tree. We had a caller, we had to stand by the Champagne Police. They had some unexploded ordnance they had gotten from, I think, Dland. And they had brought over two here. And they exploded them. So we had to stand by in case. There was a fire about this big in the grass. We just took it out of the boot and that was bye. So it was interesting to see how they did that. Uh, May 29th, we had a garage fire in Beatty that we had to go to, it was a pretty large fire. And while we were there, we had to call Monticello, so we all had to rush back. And while we were there, we had to call Montesol, so we all had to rush back. There was a house fire on, on Buchanan Street, it was mostly smoke and soot damage, so it wasn't really bad, too bad, but we got it out of them, but we'd had a fire a long time ago, two within a couple hours each other.
That's the way it is.
I want to thank the man who did it by Sir Gordo, who was actually in B Man at the time it all came, with us back to Montesol and helped us put out the fires on Buchanan Street. We had lots of training last month, we went over some of our S O Gs, our standard operating guidelines with our department. We had rewritten all our guidelines over the last year and a half, and we tried to go through them periodically so all the firefighters would be consistent. The second week of training, we went over to our burn cans, we did live fire training, we start firing the cans, and really good training for our, for our new cadets. Third week, we had Carl come over to pediatric emergencies, and so we had to do medical training about quarterly, so about four or five times a year, we had Carl come over and do different types of training. May first, we had, we did training with Cisco and thirteen other departments. Cisco had a house burn, and like I said, thirteen other departments came. It was an all-day affair on, it was a Saturday, burned the whole house down. What, what they do is they'll, we get full-time firemen for champagne and Decatur, the economy, put fires in each room, we go in there, you get the experience of being in a room with a fire, and then they put it out, they keep doing this for a while, and then Austin, at the end, it's burned the whole house down. The person that owned the house wanted to get rid of it, so they allowed us to burn it down.
On random.
That was a really good training. On May sixth, our May sixth meeting, Allison Wiggins resigned from the fire department. Her husband, Austin, is also firefighter in Montesol, they're expecting their first child, so she wanted, she's getting off of the fire department for a while, and maybe we'll get her back, so. And as I mentioned last month, John Mull left, moved out of town, we had a fire roll dinner for him too on May sixth. And then as we talked about today, we have four new recruits, which you guys, thank you all for voting them on. We're really excited, we're at nineteen now, twenty is our limit, and like I mentioned before, we got two more, two more applications, so we may be pretty close to full, so which is, which is really awesome. Also with John Mull's leaving, John was a lieutenant for us, and he, as he stepped out, we interviewed for another officer, Dan Sheehan, who was on the fire department, and we had four firefighters interview for lieutenant position, we picked Dan Sheehan as our next lieutenant, so congratulations to him. And then on May, May twenty-sixth, we had the funeral procession for Officer Ryan. As a friend of Chris, spending a lot of hot Saturday afternoons in the ballpark, and I don't joke and attest to this because he's our daughter played for our team, softball was his passion. So Amber's talking about really, really is, it would be a good thing, so I, I know how much she loves softball, that was, that was really his thing. But, you know, I want to, I want to mention, we had thirteen, fifteen surrounding fire departments come out that day, put trucks on all the overpasses between, the time he left Decatur, the time they got to Montesol, which was, was really outside to see. Fortunately, unfortunately, I was in town with Chief Carter, we were driving, we were setting up our trucks and all the intersections blocking off the roads, so that procession could come in town, and so I didn't get to see all the trucks, but I heard it was really kind of anything, I don't, I don't know if they can see, so I want to thank those, those fifteen different departments that did that. I, you know, I want to thank Chief Willholm from Cisco, he helped coordinate a lot of that from Maine County, a lot of departments west of us, and Captain M. Connecticut worked really hard with Chief Carter and I and Sheriff Hunt to really get things set up in town, about the streets and so forth. So it was quite an honor. And again, and then I mentioned Lieutenant Sheehan got to come with. Last thing, last Thursday, I was kind of having a bad day, and I get an email from Cali, basically saying that we had got our small equipment grant, which is twenty-two radios, batteries, three rapid chargers, two six bank charging stations, plugins for twenty-three thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars. So Boilermakers, thank Cali for that effort, that's awesome. I mean, that's life safety, that's, that's so super important, so thank you, Cali. Should have been, really made my day, so I really do appreciate, and I know you're working hard on others, so let's, let's just keep that ball rolling, so, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. City administrators report. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've talked enough tonight, so I'll be short and sweet. Congratulations, all the women mews, welcome to Montesol City Council. June twenty-third, mark it on your calendars, joint planning zoning board slash city council meeting at six P M. in Livingston Center. Attorney Dirk Price will be present in giving us his version, which is always entertaining, of the roles and responsibilities of each board, so it's very important if you can be here, please. It's a great opportunity to ask Dirk Price any questions you might have. So it's a Wednesday, six P M., the twenty-third of June. That's all I have.
Anything else? Anyone else forget something?
Do we anticipate moving back to our former chambers anytime soon?
No. No.
Oh.
I wouldn't wait. I like it in here better. I get a better shot of all of that and see how it looks.
As long as we need to keep doing remote participation, that's all set up here, not over there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not saying anyone, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Paper I?
I.
Pose no. See you in two weeks.
Congrats.